... attachments in our drop box.
I'm walking.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
Getting ready to prepare the checks. We can hold it for the box there. Yeah. Did it well. Tyler.
Tyler.
It's a DDA budget. It says no debt payment. Yeah. Thank you. You won't let anybody hurt us.
It's different. And the green.
I choose the red.
Madisi City Council for Tuesday, May 2nd at 7:00 PM is now open. Councilmember Goodspeed will leave at the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my heart.
Thank you, gentlemen. City Clerk, would you please take her off?
Councilmember Cooper?
Here.
Councilmember Beadie?
Here.
Mayor from Tempsalinski?
Here.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Woodland?
Here.
Councilmember Paniet?
Here.
City Manager?
Here.
City Attorney?
Here.
DPW Director?
Here.
Finance Director?
Here.
Planning and zoning administrator?
Here.
Public Safety Director?
Here.
And City Engineer?
Here.
Thank you. Public hearings will have none. Citizen comments on agenda-related items. This is an opportunity for citizens to speak on items that are on the agenda. You would please come forward, identify yourself and your address, and limit your comments to five minutes.
My name's Mary Ann Johnson. I'm from Oneakama. I, since Saturday, for some reason, I got very motivated about this project, and I started a petition for those that support it. So since Saturday, I collected over seventy, about seventy-six signatures, and that's in a matter of only a few days. Many of them said this was a good use of the property. I have the petition here if you'd like it, otherwise, that's all I'm gonna say for now.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Paula Barton, and I live in Oak Hill, and I would love to be a resident of the city of Manistee, and I'm hoping for the new housing. It's the, I think they're calling it the Olson Project. I wanna address the issue of the room needed for the senior center. I don't direct, but I run some activities at the senior center four days a week, and I can tell you there's not enough room for the exercise programs and the meditation programs and any other programs. There's just not enough room at the senior center now. We need more room. Fifty to seventy percent of the population of Manistee are now over fifty-five years of age, and we need to have room for these people to do activities. We also need the housing. I know there's objection to the housing. Some people don't want it, some people do. I'm one of the people that really do want it. I'm on a fixed, limited income, and I would love to be able to go into it. But more important than that, I think the city of Manistee needs to show that the senior citizens here matter. We need more room for all of the activities. It's a beautiful project. They have lots of ideas coming in, a store, there's talk of pickleball courts, all different types of things, and that influx of people that you would have that would be able to walk on River Street would be just greatly improved. And I really think that this is something that we need to, as a community, move forward with, not just for us that are now senior citizens, but for people that are going to be senior citizens. I would love to stay here, but I would also like to have affordable housing on a fixed income. Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. Tyler Lopnan, Executive and Economic Development Director for the DDA. By now, you're all probably aware of the DDA's position on the Third Coast Development and the pilot agreement. I would like to read the motion that the DDA Board passed on April 17th one more time for public record. "The DDA supports the relocation of the Manistee Council on Aging and the development of the grocery store to the former Olsons' property due to the benefits this project will bring to the city's senior community, but based on the information that is publicly available, recommends the city and city council do not support the low-income housing components of the proposed project at that location, and do not approve or support any financial assistance in the form of tax abatements, payments in lieu of taxes, or other incentives that impact or do not enhance the DDA's current or future tax base." Thank you.
Additional comments?
I'd like to make one more. Mary Ann Johnston again, from Oneakama. What I like about this project is that you have the senior housing. They can leave their apartment and go down to the grocery store, possibly a pharmacy, and the senior center with Meals on Wales is right there. It's a, it's a perfect setting for seniors. It's got all of it right there. It's almost as good as assisted living. Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Jeff Dons. I'm a county commissioner. I'm also serve currently as the county board chair. We have Commissioner Goodman and Commissioner Botzer with me this evening. As you're well aware from the letter that was signed by me on behalf of our full board, we unanimously endorsed the Third Coast Project, commonly known as the Olsons' Project. We've got a dog in this fight. It's the Manistee County Council on Aging, and we feel that we don't need any more vacant spaces. We'd like to see the development go there, and we don't wanna see this building become part of blight, basically. We feel as a, it's a great economic input to the community, and it will help spread that, and as investment grows, more interest grows, and more investment grows, and it will snowball. And with having said that, I'm gonna turn it over to our other two commissioners.
Good evening. I'm Karen Goodman. I am the Commissioner for the 6th District, which here is the city of Manistee. And as Jeff said, we are interested in supporting this project, and we're looking at it not only in regards to the Council of Aging, which, the Council of Aging, which we have responsibility to, we are also looking at it as an economic growth. As for the messages that have been said earlier, is that this allows our senior population, which is growing, if you look at our census, any of the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services statistics, the Michigan Public Department, Health Department, all of these will tell you that our population of seniors is growing, and we want that to happen and provide them the ability to have a safe and wonderful, comfortable living environment. And the housing and the senior center together is a perfect situation. And if we do have it for housing for persons for twenty-two thousand or less, which on a, on a restricted income as a senior, many people know that that, that's a lot even. So they're trying to make ends meet, and if they can move, then we have the ability to have housing available throughout our county, which the county commission is also concerned about, because we have a housing crisis, good, livable housing. So if seniors move out and move into the apartment, there frees up some housing, and also, if it's affordable housing, they do have money. They have spendable money, uh, money in their, in their hands to go down to downtown, and and they can walk there and spend money. So we think it's a win-win. Now, let Margaret talk now.
Councilmembers, I'm Margaret Botzer. I'm the county commissioner representing the 7th District, which represents a portion of the city of Manistee. I would like to express my support for the senior center project and the senior village and urge passage of the pilot by council. The senior center project offers a number of exciting opportunities for Manistee. It's part of place-making in our new economy. This is a wonderful mixed-use development, which is a key component of our new economy. This also helps to fulfill a need for a missing metal housing, which Commissioner Goodman discussed as well. It creates an active and dynamic living environment. Our seniors will easily be able to walk downtown to the Farmers Market, North Channel Brewery, to the Vogue Restaurants and retail businesses in our downtown district. They will also be able to easily walk to Roots on the River Concert Series across the street in the summer. The plans for the senior center project include bringing a grocery store, pharmacy, and community center. Residents will be able to either have a car or will have easy access to public transit with Dial-A-Ride right next door. Like many residents, I initially had concerns about lowering the developers' taxes on the housing portion of the project. Our residents and small businesses pay their fair share of taxes to sustain our city and county. Forty-five years is a long time to lower taxes for the developer. I shared these concerns with our city manager. He actually assured me that the city of Manistee had done its due diligence on this project. Tony Lendich, the executive director of the Traverse City Housing Commission, reviewed Third Coast Development's proposal and found it to be necessary to have this pilot in order for the project to go forward. As Commissioner Goodman mentioned, this project will also free up other homes in the county for families and new residents. Those property taxes will be uncapped on the sale, so those, those property taxes will become available to the city and other entities throughout the county. The current senior center building downtown has been sold, to my understanding, and so those property taxes will also be uncapped as well, and then that will be available for commercial development, too. The county also potentially stands to lose tax dollars with this project, yet our county board sees the greater value to Manistee County residents. Our county board has twice voted unanimously in favor of the senior center project, including the housing program, portion. I urge your support of the pilot for this project. Thank you.
You know me, but for the record, Bob Daniels, 59 Smith Street, Manistee. I promise you, no Mr. Smith Goes to Washington type of speeches here. You know exactly where I feel and how I feel about this project. I trust all of you have done all of your work on this and are ready to make a decision on it. One fact which we have not gotten out before, because it's just come to light in the past week, and I have my little phone up here so I can read this exactly, but a study was recently done of retirement income per household in the state of Michigan from the years 2010 through 2014. Manistee came in at a whopping 226th on that list, with an average in, retirement income of just over $20,000. Now, that means that the average income for more than fifty percent of the people in Manistee are under the upper income level for these apartments as currently structured by MISTHA. I throw that out only as a fact. I've got the citations here, but I mean, it just, that's, that's what it is. We've not gotten that fact out before because it just came to light last week. Now, having said that, I know that all of you, the seven of you up there in particular, but also Thad, Ed, the city clerk, Jeff, everybody involved with the city has worked extremely hard on this whole project. You've done your homework, you've really dug into it. I know where I hope the vote goes tonight, but to the seven of you in particular, to everybody who's worked on this for the city, a heartfelt and sincere thank you from me personally and from the council on aging in general. Thanks.
Sherri Wild from Oneakama. I am a property owner on River Street, and I've been actively involved in the city of Manistee for many years, the Ramsdale Theater, DDA. I was on the County Board of Commissioners for fourteen years and chair of ten. So I, tonight, would like to emphasize that I am entirely supportive of the senior center project as originally proposed in November. However, I'm adamantly opposed to the developers' request for the tax abatement, the pilot of 2% for forty-five years. Having been on the county board, I'm keenly aware of the impact that tax abatements have on the rest of the citizenry, and a lot of time, the burden is deflected to the rest of the citizens. In addition to that, tonight, I would just like to address my primary, not my primary, a secondary concern that I don't feel has gotten any attention, and that is public, one of public safety, safety, specifically traffic flow and congestion. And that is something that will be much more apparent with construction of the two-apartment buildings. I have concerns over the impact on the residential neighbors, specifically on Taylor Street. I spoke to them. They, in addition to their concern of parking that will be on Taylor, a lot of their concern is the fact of the alternate parking that will occur in the wintertime, with snow removal. The other impact that I would like to have you consider is the impact of the additional traffic that will be coming to Memorial Drive, the impact on the Farmers Market, people going to the Farmers Market, the impact to the summer concerts that are held at the band show, people now potentially coming to the brewery, which will be an amazing, I think, draw to the community, something that all the other communities have that we have yet to experience. In addition to that, safe and efficient traffic flow is vital to business residents and visitors. M.DOT safety concerns in the area of US 31 and the Bridge, thus the one-way traffic on Taylor, no left turns from US 31 to Memorial Drive on our Taylor, traffic flow currently is challenging. How adding a significant number of cars daily to this area impact traffic and the safety of people? And especially, and I know you're all really aware of that silly little curve as you're coming north into Manistee by the bridge. It would seem without additional studies and input, especially that of an unbiased traffic impact study paid for by the developer, without that, it would seem that this is sort of premature decision that you're being asked to make. And in closing, I would like to leave council with one closing thought, and that is, as a duly-elected official, public official, your guiding principle in making a decision should be to base that decision on what is in the best interest of the majority of the people. Thank you.
Good evening. Glenn Zery, 321 Fifth Street, here in Manistee. And last year, I retired here after a number of years with tribal government. And in light of that, I'd also like to say, "Good evening, everyone." When I retired, I was asked, and my wife was asked, "Where are we going to move to?" Because after you retire, you go someplace. And I said, "We're there. We like Manistee. We like what it has, where it is, the people, what is Manistee." And given our feelings there, also the fact that I am a senior, I am an elder, I love what we've been doing with our senior center. You know, Sarah and the crew down there, the volunteers, everybody has done a wonderful job, given a very small space, so I'm very proud of them and glad you've actually taken some classes there. I want to see them given the opportunity to have a good senior center, at the same time, I wanna see good housing, safe housing, affordable housing made available to them. They deserve it. It's like with veterans, they deserve our support. But when I was thinking about this whole thing, I got to realizing, it's like our country right now is in a financial mess, because we keep kicking the ball down the road. You've probably heard about the national debt. At some point, that is going to come due. And when I brought that down, all the way down to the, the city level, I started looking at the finances, the request from the developer, you know, for the 2% forty-five-year pilot. And quite frankly, ladies and gentlemen, I have serious concerns about our ability to afford this particular development and developments like it, given the fact that it is not going to be paying very much in taxes. One of the condominiums at the Chippewa Hotel area is gonna pay more taxes than the entire senior center development. Now, I'm not saying we have to beat up on our seniors. Trust me, we don't need that, but we have to be honest and realistic about where we do things in the city and what our end result is going to be. Forty-five-year pilot, that means most of us are gone, that means our children are gonna be paying for it. But worse than that, more immediately, I am concerned that we are going to have to see curtailment of some of the city's services. You know, Manistee is very blessed with a good police department, excellent fire, EMT. We, y'all have done a pretty good job. I thank you for that. But there's only so much money available to support these services. Where are we gonna get the extra funds? Now, I'll sum it up here. I would really love to drive a new Cadillac. I drive an old Jeep, because it's what I can afford. Please think about responsible finances as you go forward. Good question. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens that would care to speak?
I'd like to, Marlene McBride. I'd like to speak to you as a senior citizen of this community, not a board member of anything, but our seniors are a vibrant, intelligent, great bunch of people. We're like a family at the center. A lot of us have lost husbands and, and wives, and it's, we check on each other. It's like a family, because our family's gone, our children can't afford to live here because there's not the jobs to keep them here in our town, so the seniors kind of bind together and pull for each other. A lot of seniors have lived here their whole life, they've worked here, they've paid taxes, they've shopped here, they've given everything to this city, and I think it's time the city gives them something back.
Are there any other citizens that would like to speak?
Good evening. Mick Schumansky at 332 Fifth Street, and I just wanna make a couple of points. One is, I understand the issue with the forty-five-year tax abatement and the concerns, but it makes it sound like there is a project right on the horizon that's going to come and pay Manistee, you know, all of the taxes on that property. Reality is, this may be the best and final offer Manistee gets on this property, and 2% plus $6,000 may not be a lot, but it's a lot more than the city is getting now, and 2% of something is a whole lot better than 10% of nothing. And that may be the end result if this project doesn't go through, is we may end up with a vacant parking lot, which would be great, you know, because it will reduce traffic, but it doesn't do a whole lot for Manistee. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to agenda items? If not, we will move on. Thank you. Consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular course of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, cash balances, quarterly financial update, quarterly investment update, notification regarding the next work session, consideration of National Day of Prayer gathering at City Hall, consideration of National Salvation Army Week proclamation. At this time, city council, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed, seconded by Mayor Prostem Zalinski. Is there any discussion? City Clerk, please take her over.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beadie?
Yes.
Mayor from Tempsalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodland?
Yes.
Councilmember Paniet?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Consideration of a proposed DDA budget for fiscal year 2017, 2018. The Manistee Downtown Development Authority Board of Directors approved their 2017, 2018 budget at But worse than that, more immediately, I am concerned that we are going to have to see curtailment of some of the city's services. You know, Manistee is very blessed with a good police department, excellent fire, EMT. Y'all have done a pretty good job. I thank you for that. But there's only so much money available to support these services. Where are we going to get the extra funds? Now, I'll sum it up here. I would really love to drive a new Cadillac. I drive an old Jeep because it's what I can afford. Please think about responsible finances as you go forward. Good question. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens that would care to speak?
I'd like to, Marlene McBride, I'd like to speak to you as a senior citizen of this community, not a board member of anything, but our seniors are a vibrant, intelligent, great bunch of people. We're like a family at the center. A lot of us have lost husbands and wives, and we check on each other. It's like a family because our family's gone, our children can't afford to live here because there's not the jobs to keep them here in our town. So the seniors kind of bind together and pull for each other. A lot of seniors have lived here their whole life, they've worked here, they've paid taxes, they've shopped here, they've given everything to this city, and I think it's time the city gives them something back.
Are there any other citizens that would like to speak?
Good evening. Mick Schumansky at 332 Fifth Street, and I just want to make a couple of points. One is, I understand the issue with the 45-year tax abatement and the concerns, but it makes it sound like there is a project right on the horizon that's going to come and pay Manistee, you know, all of the taxes on that property. Reality is, this may be the best and final offer Manistee gets on this property. And 2% plus $6,000 may not be a lot, but it's a lot more than the city is getting now, and 2% of something is a whole lot better than 10% of nothing. And that may be the end result if this project doesn't go through, because we may end up with a vacant parking lot, which would be great, you know, because it will reduce traffic, but it doesn't do a whole lot for Manistee. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to agenda items? If not, we will move on. Thank you. Consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are under consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular course of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, cash balances, quarterly financial update, quarterly investment update, notification regarding the next work session, consideration of National Day of Prayer gathering at City Hall, consideration of National Salvation Army Week proclamation. At this time, city council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed, seconded by Mayor Protem Zalinski. Is there any discussion? City Clerk, please take role.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Councilmember Pannier?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Unfinished business? We have none. New business. Consideration of a proposed DDA budget for fiscal year 2017-2018. The Manistee Downtown Development Authority Board of Directors approved their 2017-2018 budget at their April 12, 2017 meeting. A public hearing on the budget was conducted April 25, 2017. The Board is requesting that city council approve the budget as presented. City Code of Ordinance Number 282.09B requires the DDA to submit their annual budget to council by the same date that the city budget is required by charter to be approved, which is May 15. At this time, council could take action to approve the Downtown Development Authority 2017-2018 fiscal year budget.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski, seconded by Councilmember Goodspeed. Is there any discussion?
I only had one question I was able to ask Tyler before the meeting, but I'll just repeat the question and the answer. I asked why there was zero in the rent column for the upcoming year, and he said that's because he's moving his office into this building. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. That was the only question I had. Good. Saves some money.
Are there any other questions or comments? City Clerk, please take role.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Pannier?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
And Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of adopting the 2017-2018 budget and capital improvement plan. Under Section 7-4 of the Charter, the annual budget must be adopted before May 15 of each year. The budget has been the subject of multiple work sessions and a public hearing. At this time, council could take action to adopt a resolution approving the 2017-2018 budget and capital improvement plan for the city of Manistee.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski, seconded by Councilmember Cooper. Is there any discussion?
I just disagree with the defunding of the AES. That's my thoughts on the budget.
I totally agree. I think, I know you, people have personal feelings, or not even personal feelings, but different feelings, but I believe they do provide a fillers.
Any other comments?
Well, we left the door open for negotiation on that, so I hope the time is used wisely.
No other comments? City Clerk, please take role.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Pannier?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
No.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
No.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of Third Coast Development Payment in lieu of Taxes Pilot Request. Third Coast Development is requesting a 2% pilot with an annual $6,000 municipal service agreement for 45 years to facilitate the development of the Olson's property. The MSA would increase municipal service agreement by 2.5% each year, and the pilot payment would increase based on sheltered rents. At this time, council could take action to approve Third Coast Development's request for a 2% pilot with an annual $6,000 service agreement for 45 years.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Beaton, seconded by Councilmember Whitlam. Is there any discussion?
I do, Mayor, if I may. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody over the last couple of months who participated in giving me feedback, pros and cons. I did a lot of listening. I attended a lot of meetings, everything from tribal meetings to county commissioner meetings, to township meetings, to the council on aging meetings. I tried to get as much information and feedback as I could. I find this to be two issues, is there's the issue of what is real, and there's an emotional issue. What can we really afford? I kind of like to just have you indulge me for a minute, I kind of want to go through this process. We started out, and one of the first meetings I went to, we talked about a council on aging building. We didn't want to talk about the development, the housing part of that. That wasn't part of it. I heard that over and over again, we weren't going to talk about that. This was just a council on aging building. From that, we went to going to the housing part of that, and Third Coast needed a motion or needed a 10% pilot or needed some kind of a pilot so they could fill out the squares. And at that time, I heard Mr. Levitt from Third Coast Development get up and make the statement that, "I am committed to this project, this senior center project, and irregardless of what happens," and he made it to this body, "irregardless of what happens to that, to the housing part of that, I will honor that, that building, that senior center. I'll honor that, what I said, I'll do what I said I would do." So then, we passed the millage for the 10% for 35 years, and then we go to the, knowing that we had to renegotiate, and I was under the impression that we were going to negotiate a 4% contract. Then we go from that and get this, what's before me tonight, is a 2% payment in lieu of taxes. I tried to put this in perspective in my mind, and I'm thinking about 45 years down the road, and how does that affect the taxpayer? I kind of thought of a young family today with a 10-year-old child. And I put it in my mind that that 10-year-old child in 45 years is going to be 55 years old. So what I approve tonight, or how I vote tonight, or whatever happens here, is going to affect that person's children, their grandchildren, and potentially their great-grandchildren. That's a long time in the future, and I see really no increase or substantial gain in taxes to the community. Now, I'm trying to take the emotional part of this, out of this, because the emotional part, I am for the seniors. I want them to have the best. I am a senior. I'll be 75 this year. I want to take that emotional part out of it because I feel that I have to deal with what are the facts that are in front of me, and my vote tonight will be based on those facts that I see, and what I feel is the best interest for the city and the future taxpayers of the city of Manistee. I have had comments from as far away as Norway, I have one on my email, that bought a piece of property on Maple Street who plan to move here. And the statement that they used in their letter, I thought was quite unique. "I plan to move here from Norway and build my houses. I plan to pay my fair share of taxes, and I expect everybody else to do the same." Thank you for taking the time to listen to me, I appreciate it.
Other comments?
One of the things I remember during our work sessions was that we did talk about the 4% pilot, but we didn't talk about that necessarily with the municipal services agreement. I believe we ran the numbers, and we discussed it at one of our work sessions, that the 2% pilot and the $6,000 municipal service fee that's going to be paid every year is more than what the 4% pilot would have brought in. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. That's one clarification I wanted to make right now.
Some time ago, 20 years ago, there were two projects that came, wanted to come in to Manistee, in the county of Manistee. One was prison, one was the casino. There was opposition to that. Didn't want the prison, didn't want it here, didn't want the casino. Now, some 20-plus years later, both are beneficial to the community and the county. I believe that this project will have the same legs and be beneficial to our community and outside of our community.
Any other comments?
Yeah. I appreciate all the outreach for your opinions. I welcome them. I am really proud of this community. We have a very strong, boisterous community, and I've been on mixed feelings about this for a while, but I do, I love the fact of we would get a new senior center. I, there's, I mean, I'm totally support, 110, for that. I do have concerns with the pilot. I was okay with 10%. I knew that the 4% would be coming, but the 2% is alarming when you first hear it. And we do have to think about, can the city afford it? What Glenn had said. And we really need to think hard about that and see if, you know, we have to think about all of the citizens, not just senior citizens. And I have to think, and I, I'm the young one here, I understand that, and I will still be around, and how beneficial it will be to my kids, to me, to everyone.
Let me make just one more comment, Mayor, please. What happened for me was that when this was just a senior project, it was a great project. I was so impressed with how it was put together and how we were going to be in it by the 4th of July, I could not believe the work that must have gone into that. Then it changed to putting in apartments in these pilots, and all of a sudden, now it changed from just a senior project to every taxpayer in the city of Manistee's project. And that's where my decision will come from tonight, is thinking about every taxpayer in the city of Manistee.
Any other comments? You know, a 2% pilot was a $6,000 service fee. Would generate about $9,750 a year. As was pointed out, you know, Stillwater Development with condominiums, these cottage condos, 11 units that would go in. One of those condos to a non-homestead occupant would pay the same tax or more tax than this project will for the city. The Edgewater Development condos in the North Channel, tax capture, brownfield project, and a partial abatement, estimated $170,000 a year in headlong taxes for tax capture. The Hollander project was estimated at 120. I asked the assessor, and we got the numbers, on an $8 million estimated project, what the taxes potentially could be. You don't understand, if you don't build it, you don't get anything, but we get $40,000 a year from taxes on that property right now. It would get less with the development. Even if the senior center happens and moves in there, and we get the grocery store, we're still going to get less in tax out of the property because of the senior center's exemption. And I look at the long range, you know, and we just passed a budget, a balanced budget. There's some contingency funds, some surplus funds in there to negotiate the AES contract going forward. You know, I look at the lack of growth, and you go back 10 years in budgets, and you'll see the same thing, concerns about the lack of revenue, the lack of revenue and growing expenses. We cut appropriations by, what, about $40,000 this year? Items that we have routinely paid for in the past are not in the budget. Our PEG commission was cut $25,000. Other appropriations were eliminated. We're at a point where the rising cost, 19% increase in healthcare for our city employees, who all do a great job, and I appreciate them as much as anyone in the city does. Retirement costs as well. The budget clearly states that headcount reductions can't be dismissed for the future without growth of revenue. And I look at it, and I say, you know, we need projects that are going to grow revenue, that are going to contribute to the tax base. And I've received feedback from Citizens Pro, Citizens Con, like Mayor Protem Zalinski. I'm a senior, I go to the senior center, I enjoy the services offered by the senior center, I'm a tribute to the senior center. I don't want to see it flourish and do a great job. I am concerned about the 2% pilot. The trend seems to be, in the state of Michigan, you go from 10% down to 4%, down to 2%. It is constantly trending down. We have two other pilots that are active in the city, and I would guess that we probably are conceding hundreds of thousands of dollars of tax revenue with those. You'd imagine what a couple hundred thousand dollars more in the budget would do, especially if we applied it to streets, we could rapidly accelerate a street maintenance program and fix some things that need attention in the city. It is a concern. As was pointed out, when this project started out, it was strictly a council on aging move in a grocery store. And that was going to happen no matter what. And then it evolved to a situation where we throw some housing in there. Housing is important to everybody. Everybody needs to have, say, comfortable, serviceable housing. But I think you also have to look at the cost. And I'm looking at the cost in the future, and a 45-year pilot at 2% is a very long-term commitment, it's going to outlook big. Any additional comments? City Clerk, please take role.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Councilmember Pannier?
No.
Councilmember Cooper?
No.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
No.
And Mayor Smith?
No.
Consideration of Farmer's Market License Agreement. The city has allowed a portion of the public parking lot to be used at the farmer's markets. However, use of was never formalized. Given the potential for conflict due to development and redevelopment projects in the vicinity, it's best to have an agreement in place that safeguards the city and the farmer's market. At this time, council could take action to approve a license agreement with the Manistee Community Kitchen for the use of the city's parking lot for a farmer's market.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski, seconded by Councilmember Cooper. Is there any discussion? City Clerk, please take role.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Pannier?
Yes.
And Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Consideration of a Resolution Authorizing Voting System Grant Application. The state of Michigan is requiring all jurisdictions to replace their current voting equipment by 2018. Partial funding for the new voting system will be provided by the state, and will include a combination of federal help America Vote Act and state appropriated funds. The funds would include the purchase of two precinct tabulators, one absentee voting counting board tabulator, two accessible voting devices for use by voters with disabilities, and EMS software if needed at no cost. This would also cover five years of service and maintenance at no cost. In order to receive the funding for the equipment, a grant agreement must be signed. The grant agreement establishes ownership of the equipment at the local level, sets requirements for ongoing record maintenance, and establishes equipment totals. Implementation of the new equipment for the city of Manistee is proposed for November 2017. At this time, council could take action to adopt a resolution authorizing the city clerk to submit a grant application on behalf of the city of Manistee for the purchase of a new voting system, contingent upon the review of the agreement.
a new voting system, contingent upon a review of the agreement by the city attorney, and further authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the resolution.
I'll make the motion.
I'll begin.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Zalinski, second by Councilmember Cooper. Is there any discussion?
Please take a roll.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beeden?
Yes.
And Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Consideration of Fifth Avenue Beach Concession Stand three-year contract with North County Cafe. Operation of the Fifth Avenue Concession Stand was publicly advertised for bids earlier this year. One bid was received from North County Concessions, also known as North County Cafe, in the amount of $1,200 per year. The city attorney prepared and approved the contract. At this time, council could take action to approve a three-year contract with North County Cafe to operate the Fifth Avenue Beach Concession Stand for the 2017-2019 seasons in the amount of $1,200 per year, and further authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Zalinski, second by Councilmember Pontiac. Is there any discussion? You please take a roll.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beeden?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Consideration of First Street Beach Concession Stand three-year contract with North County Cafe. North County Cafe was awarded a three-year contract in 2014 to operate the concession stand, leaving one year remaining. North Channel Cafe would like to make additional capital investments to their operation, and have requested a two-year extension to provide sufficient time to absorb the investments. Staff recommends entering into a three-year agreement in lieu of a two-year extension. City attorney prepared and approved the contract. At this time, council could take action to approve a new three-year contract with North County Cafe to operate the First Street Beach Concession Stand for the 2017 through 2019 season in the amount of $1,400 per year, and further authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement.
I'll make a roll. I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cooper, a second by Councilmember Goodspeed. Is there any discussion? You please take a roll.
Councilmember Beeden?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Zalinski?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
And Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Consideration of applications to the boards' commissions. City clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the boards of Review, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Downtown Development Authority, Housing Commission, Parks Commission, PEG Commission, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. All appointments by the mayor are subject to council approval unless otherwise specified by statute or ordinance. Nominations for council appointments do not require a second. After a member of council nominates an individual for appointment, councils should vote on the nomination. A majority vote in favor of placement of the nominee is required for appointment. The following applications have been received. Downtown Development Authority, there is one vacancy, term ending 6/30/19 for a member of the office. This is a mayoral appointment. I would appoint Tamara L. Diponeo, 387 River Street.
I'll support the mayor's motion.
Please take a roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodlow?
No.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beeden?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Housing Commission, two vacancies, five-year term ending 5/31/22. Mayoral appointment. Cheryl Ann Hunzer, 273 Sixth Avenue, apartment 505. She is an incumbent. At this time, the mayor and council could take action to approve it.
I'll support the motion for the mayor's appointment.
You please take a roll.
Councilmember Woodlow?
No.
Councilmember Beeden?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Zalinski?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Notices, Communications, and Announcements. City Charter Update Review. At the February 21, 2017 meeting, city council directed the city attorney and the city clerk to review the city charter for areas that are no longer applicable or superseded by state and federal law. The review has been completed, and they have identified areas of the charter that have been changed. At this time, council could review the charter as updated. I believe everybody has a copy of it. And no action is required on this side. Concerns and Comments. Citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comment, limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Are there any citizens that wish to make a comment?
Hello again. As I stated earlier, the DDA has expressed support for the senior center to relocate the Olson site. Even though the pilot was not passed, I'll engage with the DDA board to explore what options are available to assist that and to help see that through. Thank you.
Are there any other citizen comments? Officials and staff. City Clerk?
I just want to let you know the IAN Council petition packets are available for Districts 2, 4, and 6 will be up for election this November.
I assure you.
And they're due July 25th, so they're just now available for anybody that's interested.
City Manager?
I just wanted clarification to make sure that I understand the council's action in terms of AES. I know you reduced it by half. I'll send a letter to that regard, as well as the others that had appropriations changed. But I want to make sure that you want it in there that you're willing to engage AES in negotiations for a successor agreement. Is that correct?
I believe that was the consensus from the last work session. We only funded them through the end of the contract period, which expires the 31st of December.
I will include that language in. Thank you. That's all I have.
Anything else?
Oh, that's it.
Okay. City Attorney? Public Safety Director? Chief Financial Officer?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Public Works Director?
Yes, Your Honor and counsel. I just want to take every opportunity I can to remind the public that we are going to be repaving six miles of city streets next week. Weather permitting, it's scheduled to begin Monday morning and will continue through Friday. We posted the information on the city's website and on the Facebook page. We've got some notices out, working with the News Advocate, and I believe we're going to do another article this week, right? The, with the exception of River Street, all the streets that get this treatment will be open to traffic through flight control by the contractor, so you don't have to worry about detours or anything like that. And the treatment, once they put it down, within an hour, it's able to be drive, driven on and safely driven on. The exception is that River Street, we're going to close Down River Street in two sections. One is scheduled for 24 hours, beginning in the morning of, early in the morning of Tuesday, the 9th, and will continue until business is open on Wednesday. And that section will be from Maple Street all the way east to Hancock Street. The reason why we're closing those for 24 hours is so that the material can cure enough to start resisting cars, car tires that are turning when people are parking, and it also gives the contractor the ability to re-stripe all the parking spaces and do the centerline striping. So that will be closed for 24 hours. We've also been working with the DDA to make sure that they have that information disseminated amongst all the members in the downtown businesses. On Wednesday, we will do the same thing from Maple Street going west to Spruce Street, and we'll close Down River Street and then the intersecting streets to allow that same thing. So just wanted to take the opportunity to try to get that out one more time.
Thank you. Thank you. Planning and zoning administrator?
Nothing, Your Honor.
There's a public hearing Thursday is denied?
Yes, Thursday.
On zoning. City engineer?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City council?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Again, I just want to thank everybody for the input. This has probably been the most strenuous last three or four months, however long it's been for me. I have done more listening than I have ever done in my life and heard more comments on any issue that I've been, since I've been here. This is probably the most emotional and factual research that I've done on any, any question I've had before me. I just want to thank everybody. And again, my, my decision was based on what I feel that the taxpayer is deserving and is in their best interest.
I would like to sometime throw out, put it out sometime of, I would like to revisit a possible street light down on 12th Street and Maple while we're doing the road for Daring School Zones. Look at it right, wrong, and possibly even sixth, where Kennedy School is. With the changing of the schools and everything, smaller kids, the lights on Maple, even looking Daring School Zones. You understand what I'm saying?
I think so. You're looking for a, either, are you looking for just a street light that illuminates the intersection, or are you looking for traffic?
Traffic signals.
Traffic signals.
That's by Kennedy.
Kennedy, and I'd like to think by the school.
That's something I know the school's been working on, too, so.
That's all I got.
That's a member, Woodlow? I'm just saddened and disappointed in this council for not passing this pilot. I believe that you just shot Manistee in the foot for not passing this. Councilmember Pontiac?
I'd just like to echo what Roger had said. It's, the last three months, you've really made us do our jobs with research and listening. And I, again, I welcome, even for any other topic that's up, please give me your viewpoints. I appreciate it.
I would like to say, I would always respect a diverse opinion, someone who feels different. I won't criticize someone for feeling different than I do, or voting different than I do. I've, in the past, been a single opposing vote or a minority vote, and I accept that as the wisdom of the entire council. I think financially, we need to do things that benefit the city at large. We need to sometimes wait for the right moment, and not rush to a judgment, and take something out of play that may pay great dividends in the future. But I also would like to thank all of the people that showed up, all the people that expressed opinions, city staff, all the work that went into this. It has been an exhausting process. With that, motion to adjourn.
I'll make it.